Call this meeting of the Winthrop School Committee to order. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Okay, gold balls, Sue Bell.
Here.
Joe Petrowski.
Here.
Tim West.
Here.
Captain will be here in a few minutes. Amalie here. And we do have a new student representative, but he is not able to make it today. So we'll talk about him while he's not here. So, any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Okay. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of September 7th, 2022 as written, for corrections.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All those in favor? Four to zero. Superintendent report.
Okay, I sent out my report to you, but I have a few things to add. The... Well, I wanted to introduce David Guston, who's our new student rep. I met with him earlier, discussed some things with him. He had told me that he met with you, Amalie, so that's good. Listen to the voice you experienced. He is anxious to be here. At that time, he thought he was going to be here, but apparently he told Ms. Duport that he couldn't be here. But we can talk more about him when he's actually here.
What grade is he in?
He's a junior.
Okay, so well, that would hopefully be your two years.
Yeah, that's the plan. Also wanted to... We had a sort of an email that was going on, and it's come up virtually every day for me. We are obviously aware of transportation problems. It's... I sent out a memo to the families earlier this week. And all I can say is, and Josh wanted to be here. Josh is driving a truck tonight, so he could drive the truck and be here. So things are just... It really is a national crisis. Always shorthanded, the routes have been changed. So I know he's doing everything he can. He's really spending a lot of his day driving, so he really doesn't have a lot of chance to do a lot of things. I had some from my letter. I had some interesting response. And some pretty cool ideas. And it's a little challenging what some people suggested because, as you all know, we contract for our transportation. So short of firing the company, which would be horrible, we think it's bad now. That'd be way, way worse. There's not a whole heck of a lot. I will say that I feel Josh has communicated virtually on a daily basis and is very aware of the situation, trying to be responsive. There were some parent concerns that they called and he hadn't spoken to them. And when they get to my level, I really talked to him and said, "You need to reach out to these parents." And I think for the most part, parents have been amazing. They kind of, once they have some explanation, they understand and they're doing the best they can. Some have just chosen to bring their kids themselves. And, you know, I don't want it to come to that. But it just really reinforces what I've shared with the school committee before about the need for us to get all of our buses back and hire our own drivers. But I'm still a little bit scared about whether or not we actually can hire our own drivers.
And you said that the bus routes changed was that to accommodate the shorthandedness?
That was part of it, yep. It was trying to make some attempt to deal with some other concerns with the routes. But every time you change the routes, you now, they need to now learn where all the stops are. So we have some new drivers. We have new routes. We have short drivers. And Winthrop is all alone in those predicaments.
One of the things about our contract with Northeast Charter says that... And I don't know if this is maybe a state law as well. I haven't looked into it. But a bus driver is not allowed to just go run the route. They have to first be on the bus with somebody who knows the route and watch it happen. And then they have to be comfortable enough with the route to be able to do it on their own. So it's not as easy as, oh, you know how to drive a bus. Great, take right, route four. It's a longer ramp-up process than that, which is frustrating from the outside. Come on, just get in the bus and go.
So interestingly, in other places where I've been with experience driving, whatever, especially once they get going, then you can't let somebody who doesn't know the route and you take some nice responsible high school kid or middle school kid and say, you know, you know where the stops are, and they kind of sit up there and guide the driver. I know this probably feels a little weird to people, but it really has worked quite well.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Not yet. I also did have a forum, a public forum, which was held on September 14th. It was about 12 people in attendance. I wasn't unhappy. I think it was a pretty good conversation. A number of different things. I basically focused on communication, but then it morphed into things that we've heard before, some concerns about, not concerns, but desire for our schools to be more open and inviting for our public. And, you know, some other things. And I think we will, I think we will be having more forums in the future. And I reiterated what I have said before, that if people want to invite me to go somewhere and be with people who have a particular concern or whatever, then I'm happy to do that. It's just better. I'm trying to explain, and I think people were receptive or understanding of this notion that the school committee meetings have to have a certain level of structure to them. And when you have a forum, people can come. And, you know, we covered probably three or four topics. And it was a good opportunity to have some dialogue. And Kelly and Sue were there, and I appreciated that. But it just was a good opportunity to be really, to kind of be with parents. And I think the people there seem to appreciate it. So it's something I actually enjoy doing. I know it sounds a little bit weird. But, and that was one of the things when I did my entry plan that I wanted to do more of those types of things. So we'll do more in the future.
One of the questions that was asked of Jim was would this be a standing every month, public forum? And the answer was not unless there's desire for that. So if people have questions, comments, topics that they want to have discussed in a public forum type of a situation, then you need to reach out to Jim and let him know that you'd like to schedule something like that. And if you have a specific, you know, group of people that you want Jim to talk to, then he can, you know, do it just for that small group of people or he can make it open for anybody to come. But just communicate that with Jim, either directly to him or through Colleen. And then he can schedule whatever needs to be done.
Well, the other things that I... Other things that are on the agenda that I've covered in my report and I will cover them if I make them up on the agenda.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns for Jim about his report? All right. Any appointments, resignations, retirements, transfers?
None.
Okay. I don't have a report for tonight. We have a relatively light agenda. The majority of our discussion will be on some new business about the outing club. And I look forward to hearing from Sarah on that. All right, committee reports.
Do you want to remind them about the school committee meeting on Monday?
Oh, thank you, yeah. Well, I was going to do it at the end, so it was fresh in everybody's mind. But on Monday at 6 o'clock, we are having a special meeting. It is public, similar to this, so that we can go over the results of the school committee self-evaluation. The day after our last meeting, I sent the evaluation forms to all of the committee members and asked for them to be back by today. I have all of them back. So over the weekend, I will be compiling all of that information into a single master document. And then we'll go over it together on Monday evening. All right, finance committee.
We didn't.
Okay, policy? Oh, I was looking, I was thinking about curriculum.
So we met on September 13th and went over some policies. And then we're also going to meet on October 11th.
Okay.
And then Lisa Tufa said is going to join us. Jim won't be here. And then we'll have quite a few probably policies to go over the first meeting in November.
And will he be bringing first and second meeting policies?
Yes, yep.
Say 10, 13?
11. Tuesday, right?
Yep, Tuesday.
Tuesday, 11, right?
That 11, 12.
10, 11.
Yeah. You'll probably be in Aruba, right?
I will be.
I'm not sure if you were aware, but jealous point to Aruba. I'm not jealous at all.
What time is the meeting scheduled for?
4:30.
Okay, 4:30. And where will that be?
For you.
In this room?
Yeah. And I believe some of the policies will be... The newer policies for that meeting will have to do with special education.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Negotiations. We met with the administrative team for our kind of ground rule setting meeting and to set out the calendar of when we'll meet. We're hoping to have the contract amended and signed before the end of the calendar year. We'll see how that goes. We have five...
I think it's more than that.
Five or six meetings scheduled between now and December 31st. So that's what we have at this point. Curriculum?
No.
Administrators' reports. There are none. This is the second meeting of the month. There are traditionally not administrators' reports during this meeting. All right, old business. I will entertain a motion to change the name of the Winthrop School Committee to the Winthrop School Board as discussed in the September 7th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion.
So I was charged with getting some additional information related to this issue. I had a pretty lengthy conversation with Steve Bailey from Main School Management, and I had done that before. I think I shared that. Nothing really changed. He shared with me what I read that when the consolidation law happened, they essentially dictated that single municipalities would have school committees and schools, school systems that are made up of more than one community would be having school boards. But then there's a stipulation, and I brought this up before, that if you're a single municipality and the charter, if the governing body, school governing body is covered in charter, that you can defer there. And I shared with you all before that the charter refers to this body as the Board of Education, not the School Board. So I also told you, I think when we left, that I would talk to Jeff Kolruck about it when he got back from vacation. So I spent some time with him today, and he personally doesn't have an issue. He does think that the town council might have an issue because there are, there's already members of the town council that refer to this body as the Board of Education as is prescribed in the town charter. School committee is prescribed by law. Board of Education is prescribed by charter. So he said that he, well, he didn't personally see an issue. He thought that it's possible that members of the council might. I told him I would share that with you tonight, and you can do whatever. If you're looking for a recommendation from me, I'm not really ready to make one yet. I'd like you to talk about it first.
I'm wondering if we could make a friendly amendment to change the name to the Winthrop Board of Education and also known as the School Board. Or here and after referred to as the School Board. I don't know how that language would need to look, but that's a suggestion.
So I guess my question is that they're okay if we change it to School Committee?
Well, because the law prescribes School Committee. But with Jeff sharing with me that even though it says, you know, School Committee is prescribed by law, there's still at least one member of the town council that refers to us as the Board of Education as is prescribed in the charter.
And did he feel that this is the majority of the town council?
Didn't get a sense of that one or another. Honestly, there's not that many of them, so I think anybody who would have a concern might, whatever. We are, I think we are on very solid ground. To call ourselves either the School Committee or Board of Education. I think Kelly's suggestion is an interesting twist, so to speak. If we officially are known as Board of Education, but we refer to ourselves as the School Board, I don't know if that's okay or not. Okay.
I like it.
I think that's good. But you have to move over and shake her.
How is that different than... What is the impact of change? So for School Committee, and people actually say School Board, School Committee, what is the impact of changing to the charter language and different terms in school?
So I was told, I don't know that I can answer that specifically. I mean, all the policies would need to change. Colleen did point out to me, and actually Joel probably had more historical knowledge, that prior to the consolidation law, the all the policies basically read Board, just Board, or V O E.
The other thing to think about is that the ballot says Board of Education, but we refer to ourselves as the School Committee. And so when people go to vote, there's some confusion. Or running for it, I think it's confusing. Yeah. So that's, you know, if you needed a reason to change, that might be the reason. But I don't know that we need to change. But if we want to, you know, what would that language look like?
Did your signs come through saying School Board? Do your signs say?
Mine say School Board. The ballot says Board of Education.
Yep. And we call ourselves School Committee.
Yeah.
We don't have to make a vote to change anything today. We can table this and think longer on it. We can make the friendly amendment and vote yea or nay on that.
I would like to, actually, I'm glad you said that because that's kind of what I was going to recommend. I kind of like the friendly amendment. However, I still think we have the possibility of somebody pushing back on us. And Jeff said he was going to reach out to the council. And obviously wasn't going to be able to get that all done today and see if there was actually pushback. So if we vote on it today, or we vote on it in November, it isn't going to make a difference. So I would recommend we table it.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Anyone opposed to tabling this until November? Okay. Tabled until you hear more from the town council. All right. New business. Discussion regarding JMG, or Jobs for Main Brads.
I was going to start with saying that. I don't know that everybody is familiar with JMG. And I don't know that Winthrop has any history with JMG. But one of the things that Jay and I got talking about, Ms. Duport, sorry, was the... It's a program that both he and I are very familiar with, and I'm a strong supporter of. We had it in previous district where I was superintendent, and then in that place where I most recently was a high school principal. And I just think we have a really good opportunity. And I don't want to talk too terribly much about it because we have a meeting. I wanted to just sort of plant the seed with you guys tonight because we have a meeting on Monday with two of the regional directors or whatever. I don't know what that term is. But, you know, like I said, it's... I think what I would say is this. The program has changed immensely. If you were familiar with it 10 or 15 years ago, it looks really different than now. It's more open to more kids. And I don't think we have a lot of options for a lot of our students in terms of the lectures. And I would just say this. When I, the year I left Holton, four out of the top 10 students were JMG members. So it really has changed dramatically. And it really does offer goal-setting and life-type of experiences for basically any kids who want to be involved in that. So I would, I'm in favor of it. But we really do have a meeting with the two people, and they are coming on Monday. But I just wanted to plant the seed.
So can you explain what it is just a little bit more?
What I want Ms. Duport to do then?
So I had my past school, and we actually had four specialists there. So, and I brought it to Jim because I felt it was a real opportunity for not just elective credit, but career development, exploration, leadership opportunities for kids. And I see it really fitting very well with our community service requirement. I think one of the things that I have a little bit of a quandary with is we have this, you know, requirement of community service hours, which is significant. But I want to make sure that as a school and as a community, we're providing opportunities for kids to be able to meet that requirement and not just, not, you know, not for kids to go through the motions for it to be authentic. And this is one of those means to get really involved in the community. And a lot of, like I said, a lot of career exploration. Sarah gave me some data the other day. About 13% of our kids are at CATS now, which is huge. And a lot of these kids are looking at, you know, job-specific skills, which, you know, ties in nicely with JMG. And, you know, they also do some stuff with aspirations and aspiring for kids who want to go on to technical school or four-year colleges, too. And there's sort of another side of JMG as they grow that is another huge opportunity for kids who are struggling in school, who may not be tied into the traditional school and may need more time and support. And for, you know, some credit recovery and some graduation coaching, which is something at my prior school that I really tied into to give one of the JMG specialists a caseload of kids that really needed some more time and support and some TLC. And there's some follow-up with JMG once they leave, which I think is something that we don't do a good job with that I talked to Jim about at our admin retreat. What do kids do post-high school at Winthrop? Where are they at in the fifth? You know, one year out, two years out, three years out? So we can see where our kids are, what they're doing, and, you know, what careers they pursue and how successful they're being at, you know, where they said they were going to go. So again, I just think it provides Winthrop with a great opportunity here, besides just another allot of credit. It really seems to fit well.
So the other thing that I think is really important, and I almost forgot to say this. It would have come up eventually. But we have, we are actually in a really good position possibly to do something with it this year. And the funding for JMG is huge. It used to be like a 50% match. Now it's less, we, I think, I think the, we would be on the hook for like $25,000. And they provide the person. We don't have to go out and find somebody. They will provide the specialist.
Yeah.
And we pay our portion of it, and then they pay the rest. So it's really more like a 75-25 split now.
Correct.
And it's a truly good... They also have a middle school program, but we're not ready to talk about the middle school program quite yet. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But I just think particularly with the way the program is, has expanded, that I think it can really provide opportunities for a lot, a high percentage of our kids.
Any questions for Jim or Jay?
It will be coming back again for discussion.
They have a great website. So if you're not familiar with them, if you search Jobs for Main Brads, it'll be the first thing that comes up. A couple of things might come up if you search JMG. But they're a great program. We tap into the program that I work for the state as well.
And we would have the money to pay for our...
We do. So this sort of started with a, with... We still have an alternative ed teacher in our budget. And last year, we filled out with an ed tech. So we, but we, and I'm not saying that we're not going to continue looking for an alternative ed, but we might not if we take this program on because that's sort of the old JMG model, the alternative ed type kid. And it still fits for those kids, but it's sort of expanded. So we haven't been able to find anybody. So we're just thinking if we got it, if we got it, if we put a JMG program in it, they're going to get the specialist with that specific training. And we will really feel like we will kill two birds with one stone and have, actually save a little bit of money in doing it.
Jay, plug up, sir.
This was visited quite a few years ago. And one reason why we didn't go with it was a serious concern was raised about the impact it would have on the CATS program. Now, we weren't very developed there. We had very few slots available to us and many students that should be there. But, and I also think money was a factor, too, that we didn't have that kind of money to take and go do that. But I'm totally in favor of what you're talking about. I particularly like, for me anyway, something I've talked about before is that we don't know what happens to the kids after they graduate. We need to do this. I'd love to see someone on the phone calling and contacting these kids and just keep that thing aware, if only because sometimes they could go back to adult ed and take a course in adult ed either here or somewhere else and complete their education to get to where they want to be. But I think, I've had good friends who've had their children in this program, and it's worked extremely well for them.
Anybody else?
Can I just share one?
Sure.
So last year, this came to my attention. All of the sending schools that go to CATS have a JMG program at their high school. And there is a JMG program at CATS now. And through JMG, kids can do what's called an extended learning opportunity, which are internships, apprenticeships in the field that they want to have a job in. So a student at Winthrop wanted to do an ELO this year, but couldn't because she's not at CATS this year. And so if we had the JMG program at the high school, she would have been able to access an ELO this year. We figured out a different program for her. She's doing well. We figured out a different program for her, she's doing well, but I think that's kind of how it came about. And then as we looked into it more, it just really lines up well with our data of kids who want to enter the workforce at this point, instead of jumping right into a four-year college path. So that's, that's kind of where it come from. So I'm glad you mentioned the CATS thing, there's a really strong connection there, so.
Thank you. All right. Next is a discussion regarding the High School Outing Club with Mr. Dufour and Mr. Stoneton.
And Ms. Hubert. Before they, actually, Mr. Stoneton's not here, but that's okay. I do want to say that, remind the school committee that generally speaking, we have clubs that we start up. We do them sort of voluntary, voluntary basis for two years. And then they look to get official status as a club. So this, this is only the second year of the outing club. You heard a lot about this club last year, you might have even heard a few things from Amelie. So they're looking to maybe accelerate that, but so turn it over to you two.
So Joel is covering some games tonight, so I told him that I would, you know, essentially the co-curricular piece is his job, but I told him I take care of this for him. We try to cover each other as much as we can. So I, I really see, and Amelie can speak, and I'll turn it over to Sarah here pretty quick. That the outing club is something that is a really popular and growing club for, for our students at Winthrop High School. And coming on board, learning the amount of kids that are involved, a lot of student-led sort of trips and initiatives. And really trying to do this for kids on a shoestring budget and trying to find the money to support it. And really, you know, there's a lot of barriers there. And I, I think that, you know, with the popularity of it and the drive to, to really impact kids positively and provide a lot of leadership opportunities for our kids. I think that, you know, and Sarah being as, as motivated as she is and really very passionate about the outdoors. I think it just makes sense that the school committee, we would wish that this club be sanctioned by the school committee so that they can access the school resources that we have, namely the vans, to be able to do some of these trips. And as an adjunct to that, Colleen put in the pack a couple of field trip requests. You know, great time of year to do some of the stuff, some leadership activities and another activity outdoors in October for, for the outing club. So I'll turn it over to you, but you know, I, this is something that Sarah hit me with when I first walked to the door. And, you know, I've learned a lot in the last eight weeks and this is something that I would, I would fully support.
Yeah, so in talking with Joel and Jay, just starting the process of what we have to do for next year, providing a mission statement, number of kids involved, what our goals are, putting forth a budget. And so we're prepared to do that, you know, this year on a timeline that you guys would prefer. As far as what's happened up to this point, we did receive a fifteen hundred dollar grant for last school year. And then they offered that same grant money this year. I just had to show proof of what we bought and paid for last year. And I was able to get another fifteen hundred for this year. So we, we do have a little bit of a budget for food and supplies that we need for trips this year. Yeah, I think at this point, thirty-five kids are interested in the outing club. On Friday, we can take two, I can take two kids to the Teens to Trails Outdoor Leadership Conference. It's right here at the Y Camp. So two kids signed up for that. And then we have our camping trip in October. And kids want to like hike Katahdin and go fishing and do lots of fun things and I'm up for it. And I know you guys are in support of all those things. And then with, so there's that. And then another piece that I just want to share because I feel like, you know, we can represent in this, in this stuff that we do here with outing clubs. Coming down the Pike very soon, Inland Fisheries and Wildlife is going to require that if educators in a school district want to take kids outdoors, mostly canoeing and hiking trips, they have to have what's called an educator trip leader permit. And that would be probably in effect by the end of the school year. It's, it's a, if you're familiar with main guide licensing or a camp trip leader licensing, it's kind of in between. I am on the committee at IFW for that, putting that permit in place for educators here in Maine. So I think we're in a really good place to be, you know, to represent and be a model for that here in this district as well. So that is something, so if we want to continue an outing club, we do need to. I am a main guide, so that having a main guide license kind of trumps the edge care trip leader permit thing. But it also shows that we are prepared as a district to send kids to the outdoors with someone who's, has the, has the skills, so I'd share that as well. Do you guys have any questions? I know you, last year you asked questions and had some good discussion. Or if Amelie wants to share anything more.
Yeah, I would love to. So we did, the outing club just started last year, obviously, and we really pretty much hit the ground running, did a lot of activities. It was really awesome to obviously be outside, but also like they keep saying, a lot of leadership opportunities getting to interact. This, the outing club has been the main way that I've been able to interact with underclassmen since I don't really have any classes with them. But also interacting with students from different schools has been a really great opportunity. And it's, we're a pretty large group and I think continuously growing and also a really eager group. Like again, Ms. Hubert said, like we had our first meeting and everyone was like, oh, can we do this? Can we do this? So really, I think we could get a lot of cool stuff done. And for me, I like being part of the outing club because I like to interact with people and also get outdoors. But there are a lot of people in the club, like David, who this is something they want to do for their career. They want to go into the inland fisheries and wildlife. So I think being sanctioned by the school would really help a lot of people.
Sarah, you were discussing that you've started to kind of compile some information. Were you specifically talking about filling out the rubric for JJIVE?
What is JJIVE?
So there's a rubric that we need to have the results of before we can approve or decline to have a, a club be part, be a school sanctioned club.
That may, the information was transferred on that form that Joel gave you to fill out, maybe?
Potentially, it's a five-page long.
Yeah.
Do you want a copy of it?
Yes, I would love a copy.
It's really not that bad. I know it's five pages, but it doesn't look that bad.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've talked about this with Joel and Jay, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, and. All right. I think, does anybody else have any questions before we move on to the motion?
I just have one question.
You said it's growing and that's fabulous. How big does it get until you need somebody to be helping you, another staff person?
Yeah, I, I can only take up the twelve kids, that's a loss, so.
So you can have a big group, but when you go and do an outing, you can only have twelve?
Yes, well, that's if I take twelve kids and we go canoeing or something like that. But if we do a Teens to Trails activity with camping, there's others, you know, Teens to Trails are there. So that would meet the law of taking kids outdoors because those adults are there as well, so, yeah.
So twelve in line is your age, basically?
Yes.
Yep.
Our, let's say all the teachers are interested, but they've got family commitments too. Can they take their kids?
That's up to you, that's something that, I think you should make that call and make that decision.
So this is a.
Because, because if something were to happen to that child of that staff person, you know, we, we want to make sure that it's covered some way.
I, I mentioned that because when I came here in seventy-one, the outing club was the thing. And Joel, who came after me, would know a little bit more about it. But we had an incredible group of people who volunteered to be chaperones, et cetera, including an individual that was teaching geology, one that was teaching geology and politics, and other people writing textbooks and stuff. The point is, is that some of them got to the point of saying, well, I could do this, you know, but I got to take Johnny and Joe. And they did. And we never really had a, I never knew of a problem that we did.
Yep, and honestly, I would, I'd be comfortable with that, you know, knowing that, you know, if I had twenty kids and twenty of them are very capable of being in the outdoors and I had this other adult and like kids, I mean, that, that would be, that would be all right. And I do work for an outfit, Adventure Bound, and he does let me bring my kids when I guide trips. So it, in industry standard, it, it, it happens and we could do that, so. But it would maybe just be a thing that you may wear a bit when I propose an overnight trip. I have this person chaperoning and they're bringing their child. I just think that's a thing to be transparent on.
I have one more question about the licensing piece that's coming. So if you had chaperones or even another teacher who takes this on with you, did they also have to be licensed or can they kind of be under your umbrella?
They, they can, they have, they do have to get the educator trip leader permit, yeah. And I can help with that, yeah.
Is that, if there's a parent chaperone, do they as well or only if it's a school employee?
It has to, if the school is saying that that person is in charge of kids on this trip, then yes, they need it.
Okay.
Do we know how much it costs to get the licensing?
I, I know, I do know, but I don't, haven't memorized that part yet. That's the smaller detail. And also, if you wanted that parent volunteer fingerprinted, you have to make that determination too.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else before we move on to the motion?
If, for, for that, that course certification, can you pay the teachers to do that?
That's what I was getting at with how much it costs.
Yeah, you can't say it, it's like, are we looking at like a couple hundred dollars?
We need, yeah, we need more information than.
It's, it's, I think it's like fifty bucks, if that, but it's good for five years.
Yeah.
Love the big sale.
We'll have David get on the fundraising. So Amelie and David are two of the student leaders on the outing club, just so you know. So when you talk about leadership, I'm giving you my student leader.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the Winthrop High School Outing Club being a sanctioned club for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year so that it may access school resources. So move.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Can we vote on this tonight without that information?
I don't think we can. I think we'll have to table it until we get the information back.
When would you like by?
How quickly can we get it back to us? November is when we will meet again.
Well, we'll aim for November.
Okay. I will let you know before then if I'm not ready, but.
But in order to go to these things in October, I'd hate to see them missed. So how do we do that?
Yeah, we approved all the trips last year. It's one of the things I talked to Sarah about when we were meeting with Jay. I said, I know Sarah's a, she's very gung ho and got a lot of information sort of last second and she's done a great job of getting stuff upfront. So regardless of whether you vote on this tonight or not, you can still approve trips as a unsanctioned, whatever.
But it's just more than have to wait for the use of the van and stuff like that, right?
Sure, sure.
And maybe some cash.
I, I would suggest, just a thought, just popped into my head, so it could be really, really rapid, that you go ahead and vote on this as a, as a. No, well, you can say contingent if you want, but I would just say that we have to get the other documentation. I don't know, probably best to just table it.
Well, except for if we're just voting on whether it's a sanctioned club that doesn't fit into the weeds of whether adults are allowed, whether adults are allowed.
No, it wasn't that, admission, just write admission, put a club and whatever, it's more to what, other steps need to be jumped through.
Information about amount of interest within the schools, any impact on the schools, any impact on the town, any interest with the town, the cost. Not super, super involved, but it's more involved than just saying please and thank you. And I think one of the commitments that we made earlier this year was that we would try really hard to follow all of our policies and so, so I don't think we can just.
Yeah, and if, there's no need, because you said you do have the grant, right? Is there an issue with the transportation for anything that's happening prior to November?
Yes, no.
An issue with transportation?
Yes, we have money and no issues with transportation.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's why I think Joe's question was a good one. That's why I said what I did, that I, if this was, if this particular motion wasn't on here tonight, you'd still have the next motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those had to be done now because we're not meeting in October, so need to act on those now. So table.
Table it and bring it up again. You can let us know if you will have the stuff ready for the first meeting in November or the second meeting, or if you need to push it out further than that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can.
Okay, I think you can too.
A lot of questions here.
Well, some of them are repetitive.
Some of them are based on, for, if it was an athletic team.
Right, yes.
It's not all just for them, for, for clubs.
And some of them are just like, here's the broad question now, let me break it down in pieces for you. So it looks a little more daunting than it is.
I got some leaders who've been out there.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the following upcoming outing club field trips. September twenty-third to the Y Camp in Winthrop to attend the Teens to Trail Conference. October twenty-first to twenty-third, the rendezvous camping trip in Camden Hills sponsored by the Teens to Trails. So move.
Seconded.
Discussion. Have so much fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Nobody doesn't rain this time, huh?
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Public comment. Is there anybody on the?
There were three people.
People on the screen?
So I was checking with Mike on that.
No comment, okay. Any public comment from anybody who's here in the room? Nope, okay.
Yes.
You said one, George, George Smith. When you were talking about the name change for the school board, after, last, a couple of weeks ago after the meeting, I said, well, maybe I ought to take a look at the policies because you kind of got into a policy discussion and I said, I wonder what all the policies are. And I was amazed when I started to look into it, how many there are. And I was also amazed at how often each one of those terms were used interchangeably in the policies. So there's not really a lot of, I, I shouldn't say a lot, but I noticed that in some of the policies, a school board was used, in other policies, a school committee. So I think that you're on the right track for trying to bring some closure to that issue. Something like that.
Thank you. All right. School committee comments, Sue.
Just a couple of things. I, I just kind of want to follow up because I had asked you to send me that thing, Joey, the thing that the administrators wrote. And I just, I wanted to just really point out, the message that I heard from that was it's not what's brought up, it's how. And so I think that's something we can all really work on. So I just want to make that comment. Also, I really enjoyed the forum. I was really happy with the turnout and I thought there were really great questions. I could see people learning a lot of things that they didn't know about that, that we do as a school committee. So that was really fun and I felt like they felt really heard by us. And then also, I just kind of want to say a thank you to teachers, coaches, anybody who might be giving out recommendations, references for seniors. So I know it's at the beginning of that, but it's a lot of work that our guidance office does and a lot of teachers and coaches and stuff. So I just want to say thank you in advance for all you do for our seniors. Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, I've got a number of things. The first two are basically news articles that I think everyone should be following at least. If you see it in the newspaper, read it, read it type of thing. For instance, in one of the first of its kind, the federal government has been involved with a major lawsuit on bullying in Massachusetts. And it basically is just simply a statement saying bullying is not allowed. And it's a dramatic change because of the activity involved with it. Will set, I think, certain precedents depending on how long it takes to go on. As I said, it just was announced yesterday that they're taking this action. The second thing is that a few days ago, Abisha was one lieutenant that ceremony, in fact, the World Congress ceremony, the recognition of it, actually introduced it. Former Governor LaPage has introduced the Parents' Bill of Rights, which I've spoken about a number of times, more to warn you than it was coming. It has been passed by some states. And it's a specific clarification that you have a right to know. And it sets up certain things and of course, it then has the power of statute if the legislature goes ahead and passes it. I'm not saying that it's going to happen here in Maine in the next, you know, few months. I'm not even sure what will take place during the election, et cetera. But it's not going to die because other states across the country are adopting it. And it's more in line with going beyond what I'm talking about right to know. But it does, you know, give the power of statute as far as backing it up. And I think you may have had some of that discussion at your communications meeting too, that this is what people just want to be able to know and get straight answers and feel comfortable about it. It's been difficult enough and certainly with new administrators coming in that sometimes old traditions don't get carried over. And, you know, one example, and I try to explain to people that you've got to take and go with the flow a little bit of this thing, but was when the elementary school didn't seem to have that field day at the end of the year that also included parents, but more importantly, grandparents. Because that had been a tradition pre-pandemic. And many of us had eaten some very bad hot dogs as a result of it. But the point is, is that, you know, people want to get back to some of those traditions too. And so always be thinking about, you're talking about welcoming people and being open with them, that just little things like that, inviting more of the family, the extended family to participate, some of these small things. But I think a lot of people can remember that day when they had that, you know, lunch, barbecue, whatever we wanted to call, call it, but it was all about gathering people together too, which was very successful. I'm finding that, uh, I, I don't know where you've gone with this, but I mentioned at the last meeting that I hope that you set up some, a school visit to see where repairs are being done with the town council people. I'd like to also see the school board go along too. I mean, we're being asked to make decisions on repairs, et cetera, where we really don't have a lot more knowledge of what's on that piece of paper in front of us. But I've been through these before in the past and they are very enlightening. And sometimes they can make you even more concerned than what you were before. For instance, I can't tell you how many years we've talked about the extension of the sprinkler system in the grade school, which was the old high school, which, which I taught in, let's say. I don't, I know we didn't have the old high school when I was there, but I know regulations have changed too, and, and I also believe that, it's maybe Jenny, you had mentioned that, you know, the fire departments get a little bit concerned about they have to make excuses for us all the time. And that's the type of thing which I like to see emphasized with the town council, that wait, what are we gonna do if we can't use that section of the building because we're not ready to go? And so, you know, this is a major thing, and I think the thrust of getting us individually more involved will be easier in terms of promoting getting this done if, if we can actually see it in person. So I'll follow that up. What, when do you think the town council's gonna take this up?
Yeah, you know what, I'm glad you brought that up, and it's not really my thing to do, but you asked me, so I can answer it.
Yeah.
The, I talked to Jeff today, and it is gonna be on the October 3rd, um, town council meeting, but not as an action item. They're only, they want more discussion. And so that means that the vote at the earliest will be in November. So, well, you know, we'll see, we'll see, I don't know what the, I'm curious to see what the discussion is.
Well, it might be helpful if you set it up a little bit by having Dan Brooks come in, talk about, you know, he's not too excited about some of his job, which is, could be ending up closing us down.
That's a great, great suggestion, you know. He's a good person to do that to.
He is a good person to do it, and he certainly would, would work with you on that too. Great excitement around the, the town about all the activities going on, there's no ifs, buts, and amers about that. Lot better mood in a lot of people as a result of it, and I hope it continues, but, you know, unfortunately, there are economic issues out there too, which are crucial, especially those people who're filling up their oil tanks right now. It's really bad, and I, I've been kind of embarrassed in a way, but I know I'm not causing it, but I, I talked to some people just simply because I don't know them, I wanted to just say hi to them, something like that, and immediately, immediately after you ask them, you know, what do you think, how things are going, I mean, the tears come in their eyes and they talk about oil, the heat, just how much it costs at the grocery store and everything else. And when you look at a, a county that we have, where you have better than 20% are basically dependent upon whether they get social security benefits or they get a main state retirement system pension, boy, that's not a lot of money. And it's certainly being wobbled out. And I, I mention that only because we will be affected or you will be affected when you're setting the next budget and, and what we can afford to do. It's not that I would even think, I wouldn't even consider the fact that you would demean people, but I know this is a difficult balance that you're gonna end up in, and everybody's gonna have to participate in it. And then my final thing, I don't mean to bring this up again, but I still do not know what my favorite book title, what we are doing with it, Mr. Superintendent and Madam Chair. I don't even know if we have it, it's available to students in the library. I do not know if it's ever been judged to be age appropriate, so it's in one library or not in another library, which is, is true in some cases, but I would just like to know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clarify. Are you asking for, like, as a school committee member, um, because you feel like ultimately we're responsible for stuff like that, or are you asking for other people in the community?
Well, it began because I was asked a question by that person. Okay? And then, of course, the longer it goes on, the more interested I am as to what's taking place. And I am interested in, there is a connection between who's responsible. And the last time when I was told that something about a librarian being responsible, I asked the librarian and I'm going, like, it's still, it may not matter to you, but in my view, it's clear that by statute, that school committees are responsible for the curriculum in any school system.
The reason, the reason why I'm asking is because, um, there are two really different processes that we follow. If, you know, we talked last time about if we're, if people in the community are coming to us and wanting answers, that we encourage them to ask the administrators or the teachers or whatever, and, but if it's something as a, as a committee member that you're interested in at our level, then I don't think we need to waste our administrator's time with that, that we could do that amongst ourselves. That, that's my understanding of the two different processes. So that's why I'm asking that, a kind of a clarifying question.
I think, I guess from my perspective, the, the sort of, um, issue, why this became sort of an issue, at least for me, has somewhat been, I'm gonna say resolved or whatever, so I certainly don't issue in, in saying to you as a school committee, or a school committee member who is interested as a school committee member, that those, that book does not, is not in any of our schools.
Thank you. And that is the only person I asked for, you guys. Now, I could make the other argument that as a, the role of the school committee is different, perhaps in your view or anybody else's view, but I do believe that you are the representative of your constituency, and that you should always be willing to carry what, if they ask you a question, you can't answer it, and then you go through the proper channels to get that answer for it. And you should not have to tell them, the only way you're gonna get it is if you do it yourself. That's passing the buck. Okay? And I, I repeatedly said that in other ways, and I, I firmly believe it's true, and I will defend it forever. And I think one of the things that you may have missed out, and Mr. Smith did say this today, I've always wanted people running for office to see the policy book. There are issues within that policy book because some are mandated. For instance, when you're dealing with the, the special education stuff, that is basically coming out of, the state has required us to do these things. But there are other things going on, such as the rubric and everything, is not a mandated thing coming down from the state. Now, I don't know whether it comes from us, but I do remember it was put together or it comes from main school management, but they are not legally responsible for doing this for us. They assume they are, and that's why they have membership, et cetera. But the fact is, is that we do not have to adopt one of those because it's not mandated. Now, you can get into all the arguments you want, but I would take it, bring any attorneys in and not go too far and get yourself in trouble, because this is very specific. And I just, and I also find that, you know, this is what people don't understand when they see that, that the expectation up here is that you will enforce all those policies. You know, as I've sat here longer, I've said, there may all be good policies, but I'm not sure about the enforcement part. What is the, the consequences of all this, of all we want people to behave in a normal way? And, and unfortunately, again, I don't really have the real complete answer. I mean, it's probably most likely that main school management is doing the right job and NDA's got their, their set of groups. But it's a very frustrating thing for people on the committee to find out that now you are responsible for doing it this way, such as in the letter that is supposed to be signed or is, well, that is to be signed, it's not supposed to because there's no mandate. But the point is, is that if you are only allowing people to run for the school committee who are going to put the school first, pupils first, whatever it is, you've left out a whole segment of your community who has no students here or anything else, but they aren't concerned about how it's gonna cost them. And you, you gotta watch about playing the balancing act here. And so I just say, uh, you know, keep the discussion going, but hit some legal reference on this thing because this is a hard issue, a very hard issue. You know, I won't be around to carry that ball, but the point is, is that I would be out there advocating the same thing. And that's not a threat, that's just a promise, okay? I hope.
We've got a couple more people we need to make comment first, okay? Did?
I have nothing to add. Um, I'm looking through the main school management, they would figure this happening at the end of August, and there's, I've looked at, I'm Googling registered and I looked at the list, and I thought perhaps I'd share with you guys the list of different topics that I can go to, and if there's something that really pops out at you, please reply by email and say that, you know, yeah, that's something that we should pursue at this point.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, and Colleen did resend that to all of you today. If you are able to attend, that's great. One, even one day is, uh, no.
So I just wanted to say, um, when Ginny, the hire was our chair, and we all went, we had, we had assigned, we had to come back and give a little synopsis of everything.
Oh, dear, oh, dear, oh, dear. Let's get over that part.
I just want to share a little bit about homecoming next week, because like Mr. Pete Johnson said, that's a pretty big thing in the town. So at the high school, we have dress up days every day next week, and then we have the parade on Wednesday, which starts at six at the high school and then travels to the grade school and ends in a big bonfire, which is really fun, and it's always really awesome to see all the people who come out to watch that. And then Friday, there's.
What do you say for about Wednesday?
On Wednesday, it starts at six.
What?
At the high school?
Yes. And then on Friday, we have the homecoming football game, which is also always a pretty big event, and then on Saturday is the homecoming dance for high schoolers.
Um, what time is the game on Friday, do you know?
I believe they're always at Saturday.
George, did you request anything you needed to add?
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that I was in Alaska a few days ago and, and I got on land and so I could look at my news feed and, and Buxton showed up with the same issue that, that Joe raised last week, you know, about that same book. So I, I, I agree that it's, I, I just kind of remember when my kids were small and, and in a small town in Michigan, and, uh, and this was in the, this was in the early seventies. It was even, yes, in the early seventies, and, and there was some talk about having sex education in the schools. And I couldn't believe how much the, the town got up in arms about that. And I think that, and I think that, that the underlying issue on, on this whole discussion is that very same issue, you know, um, yeah. But anyways, I, I just wanted to mention that I had seen an issue from another school district in Maine, and I think it's important to keep the discussion going, how we've, how we've figured it out.
Thank you. My only comment is just a reminder about the special meeting on Monday at six here. And that's it. Without objection. I declare the meeting adjourned at 7:06.